All right. So it is February 1st, 2016, 6:30. And we'll call the school committee meeting to order.
I actually have 6:35, so just for you.
6:35, okay, thank you. We're gonna start with the approval of our minutes. We have three sets of minutes. The first one is from January 11th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th?
I will make that motion, approve the minutes from January 11th. Second?
Any discussion, question? I'd like a quick clarification. In this section related to... I'm gonna butcher your company's name or...
Oh, KERSH.
KERSH. There's a mention that there will be a three to five year payback. Is that correct? It may take three to five years?
No, 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 that's talking about the energy, the LED program.
That's what it is.
At the high school.
Okay, good, I was getting a little confused on that one. Okay, good, so I'm all good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have two other sets. These are related to the meetings that we had around superintendent conversations, negotiations on January 21st and on January 26th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from January 21st?
So vote.
A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, correction, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. January 26th, 2016, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any questions, edits, or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I will abstain.
Okay. Very abstinent.
Yep, gotcha.
Okay. The next section is awards and presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shelley Rule, come on down. I have to say, we have an extraordinary staff here in Granby that does a lot of things, but I thought Shelley deserved special recognition. Shelley is a paraprofessional within our school district, and last year she served as a long-term sub for a teacher who was out. The teacher had to be out again for a large part of this year, as a matter of fact, just returned to work today. You know, long-term subs, we don't think a whole lot about, but what people need to know about Shelley is that Shelley put her completion of her degree on hold to do something for college this fall and this winter. And I think that's extraordinary, the personal sacrifice that you made on somebody's behalf. I'm gonna cry. But, you know, we really appreciate it. You went above and beyond, and it is my pleasure to recognize that.
Thank you.
Hi, Shelley.
Yeah, thank you.
So sometimes when people go above and beyond, I think it bears noting that. And so we are definitely appreciative of everything that Shelley has done to make sure that a bunch of elementary school students had a good start to their year, and she's working in transition with the teachers, teachers coming back into whatever, and they're gonna co-do parent conferences this week and all of that kind of stuff. So again, a great personal sacrifice to her.
Thank you. Levan and Ella?
Yes. As you remember, this past summer, I told you that Clay Hennessy was taking some professional development with teachers from across the valley on exploring computer science. Clay could not be here tonight. I guess his wife is taking marriage courses, so he's home with small children and all that kind of stuff. But we do have a student with us who has been taking some of the coursework that he's offered as a result of his program, so Mr. Cavall, turn it over to him.
Sure, Mr. Cavall, absolutely. So maybe you saw in the news this past weekend, actually it was part of President Obama's Day of the Union address, where he sort of has made a call for all students by the time they graduate from high school to take at least one computer science course. It was in the news, and obviously it was pretty big. Last spring, we came to you with a proposal about working with this grant that we have in place from Mr. Hennessy, being a computer science teacher, has given up some of the Saturdays as well as a week last summer to get trained in teaching computer science to our students. We currently have one section of computer science, it's a year-long course. I'm here, I'm happy that Devin Wildin was able to make it. We actually were waiting for one other student who was going to make it, but he's not here with us this evening. But we have a class about 16 students, ranging from 10th graders to 12th graders, and the really, the only prerequisite that was required was that you need to have Algebra I under your belt in order to enroll in the course. And Mr. Hennessy has come to me as recently as last week, expressing how elated he is in terms of progress that the students are making in the class. In fact, maybe Devin, the new thing now that's starting up is Scratch?
We haven't started yet, but tomorrow we are, and it seems really interesting.
So maybe if you wanted to ask a question or two, I've been in the class, and all I know is every time I go in there, it's like I'm interrupting the class because the kids are so engaged, they're doing their thing. We talk about student-centered learning environments. When you walk into the computer science class, that's what you see, kids focused, engaged, and, you know, on the computer, doing work. So maybe you just wanna, Devin, if you can, explain to the school committee what the class entails and some of the stuff you've been doing so far this year?
Sure, stand up or...
Stay right there, it's okay.
In the beginning of the year, we learned about algorithms, and we also learned about problem solving, different problems. And right now, we're finishing up HTML coding, and that's probably one of my favorite things in the class.
So the kids are really excited about it. It's a year-long course, and, you know, as I was talking to the students this morning, you know, I think through word of mouth, that we're gonna see more students in the coming years sign up for these classes, which means we could very well have two or three sections, once the course selection sheets go out in a couple of weeks, to see exactly, you know, what the interest level is with our students here at the school. You know, and then down the road, we actually have one student who's doing AP Computer Science. It's through the VHS. She's a senior. You know, I talked to Mr. Hennessy about maybe a couple of years, about maybe getting trained through the College Board and offering AP Computer Science to students. But we're starting slowly. I think right now, you know, the reports from the students are very favorable, and we're excited that, you know, we've been able to add that to our program studies.
Cool. So you guys are creating websites?
Yeah.
Do you get to apply it somewhere? Do we... Do other people get to see your work?
Um, no.
No, not yet?
No, no.
Okay.
So, thank you for coming, Devin.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
I told her it was only gonna be a few minutes, that the committee might have some questions for her, but I really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Welcome, coming.
Next section is visitors' comments. Do we have any visitors who would like to speak?
Comment?
Who would like to comment? That's the best. I guess we don't. So we're gonna skip that section. Student representative report. Annabelle?
Okay, so I have a couple of things. So this week, the Hope Club is having its Valentine's Day fundraiser. Usually it's only carnations, but this year, they're also selling bags of goldfish, like the little, I guess they're like, I don't know, like just a little bag of like, not like a... Those are for a dollar, and then the carnations are for $2.
The king of goldfish?
Yeah. And then this, the past few meetings, the student council has been organizing Spirit Week, and like what all the days are gonna be, and the events that are gonna take place. And the class of 2018 is having their second fundraiser, and they're selling popcorn, like different kinds of popcorn, yeah.
So is this benefiting a specific class, or is this overall?
Yeah, your class. Yeah, our class.
Your class, okay. Cool.
When is Spirit Week?
Next week?
Is it next week?
Yeah, before vacation, yeah.
It's 12 through the, it's the 12th right through the Friday, which is the 16th. Six, twelve, G, twelve, is my right? No, no, what I'm saying, it's the 15th through the 19th.
That's vacation week.
Vacation week.
Actually, we have a lot of spare days that week.
It's next week!
I want to tell you that, Annabelle reference is going to be a little bit different this year because the Friday prior to February vacation is a half-day of school. So whereas we always reserve 12:30 to 2 o'clock for the pep rally, the pep rally is actually gonna begin at 9:30 in the morning and take us to 11 o'clock, which is dismissal time. So Spirit Week is only a four-and-a-half day week, and it always precedes vacation.
You must have planned it that way this year.
What's that?
You must have planned it that way this year.
Well, you know, we, was it last year? I think we're, last year, we had a snow day the Friday prior to February vacation, and we ended up having the pep rally the Friday before April vacation, but who knows?
No snow days this year.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
So we're excited about pep rally, and Spirit Week.
So what kinds of activities are happening during Spirit Week?
Well, there's actually, this year, we're changing a lot of things. Like usually, there's like twin day and stuff, but this year, like all the days and stuff have been changed. There's like...
Don't know how to dress.
Yeah.
They're...
Do they have school corridor days still?
Yeah, it's Friday. So one of them is the Hungry Hippos thing. It's literally like you're on like a board, and then someone pushes you out, and then you have to like collect all the... Sounds really fun, yeah.
Do we have insurance for that?
Can we help out, why?
Three-legged hockey?
Yeah. Should be fun. Well, you guys have a great time. Sounds like it's gonna be fun, as always. Do you have anything else to add? No? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that you have a rehearsal to go to, so feel free to leave anytime you want.
Thank you, Annabelle.
Okay. Next, we have our reports and recommendations of our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thought I'd start the meeting with talking about our day today. About 9:30 this morning, I received a phone call from Chief Wishart stating that there was a missing person, and that the state police were out searching, and of course, it's been on the news that it was a 16-year-old girl, not a student in Granby, but a student at a charter school. And, you know, there were some concerns about safety and whatnot, so we immediately went into a shelter-in-place, which is basically meant that we locked classroom doors, we locked buildings, and just allowed business as usual to go on in the classrooms, but not having students move around in the buildings. Shortly after we went into the shelter-in-place, I got a call from, back from the chief that some of his initial safety concerns had been allayed, so we went sort of into a modified lockdown, and the purpose for doing, not lockdown, but a modified shelter-in-place. We allowed the kids to move freely throughout the buildings, but we kept everybody in for recess and any outdoor classes or any of that kind of stuff, mostly because a search was taking place close by to campus, and we just wanted to make sure that we were not in any way, shape, or form, you know, interfering with police investigation and a search. About 12:30-ish, I got another call from the chief who said that the student had been found, the student was safe, and so we lifted the shelter-in-place. So as many of you know, two Connect Ed messages went out, one announcing the shelter-in-place, and just trying to reassure parents that, in fact, there was nothing to be concerned about from a threat level. And then, of course, the second one to let people know that we had lifted the order. So that was pretty much how the day ran for the first part of the day, and, you know, and then we went on with business as usual, but, I mean, you know, lunches happened, and kids were out and about, and that kind of thing, so it was a story that ended well, so we were pleased about that as well.
So a quick note on that. You know, unexpected and unfortunate events happen, and, you know, this is, these are the times when the news sometimes get away from us, so thank you all very much. It was actually very quick that we all received some information. Probably everybody was hearing something from their students too, texts or otherwise, that something was happening. But before, you know, there was a major reaction. I received the initial one via phone, by email, and then the second one, as soon as it happened, that everything was fine and safe. So thank you for quickly reacting and acting, and making sure that everything was safe in our schools.
Well, you never get in front of social media, and just about the time the first Connect Ed call was going out, the first lunch wave happened at the high school, so then all of a sudden, my office was inundated with parent calls. So I just made a little trip down to the cafeteria, check in on the kids, you know, see what was going on. Somebody said, "Why are we in lockdown?" I said, "You're not in lockdown, 'cause you would be in a corner of a classroom being silent, you wouldn't be eating lunch right now." We just asked me not to go outside while we allowed the police to do what they need to do, so, you know. So it was a good moment with the kids. I know Mr. Cavall went down just to make sure that everybody was, you know, copestric during some of the other lunches as well. One thing I would just say, since the camera's running anyway, is that when the phone calls come in from us, oftentimes, we are flooded with calls. Who's made a phone call? If you don't pick it up, there is a voicemail, and I would just encourage parents to listen to the voicemail or to read their emails versus calling our office to find out what was said. In the event of a critical emergency, we need to leave phone lines open, so if people are constantly calling in to find out what message has been left for them versus listening to the message, that can make things difficult to manage in a real crisis. So I just would encourage people to check messages first rather than call, if that's helpful.
I just think also what happened, what compounded things a little bit, which Dr. Annabelle dropped today, was that the announcement by the school came, you know, pretty much at the same time that a helicopter was landing on the premises. And I think that, you know, to use a better word, freaked out kids a little bit, because they heard shelter-in-place lockdown, and they heard helicopter, and are like, "What is going on?" And what we've been trained, which I think we're doing a better job, is is trying to, for the sake of transparency, is communicating with students as much as we know, you know, with information, to alleviate, you know, any kind of anxiety or fears or concerns that kids have. More information that they have, many times, the better it is for our community. And so I think that together collectively, we were able to do that within, you know, short time.
Yeah, 'cause a couple of kids did ask me at lunch what's going on, and I just said, "This is what I know. There is a missing person. The police are looking for the missing person." You know, we're just staying out of their way today. That's why nobody's leaving campus today.
Was that announcement initially made over the PA systems to the students?
Shelter-in-place, lockdown, that was the initial message that we gave, and then minutes later, it was more specific to the information that we had. Because I even quit asking, I didn't know what we were really dealing with.
Right, right, because we called a pretty...
Our information kind of changed over time, so we received...
And that happens in any of these kinds of situations, that, you know, things change within minutes of each other, or seconds of each other sometimes, so, and that was the case with this. Within a few minutes, we realized that, you know, we could be a little looser about the shelter-in-place, but just that our need was to stay out of law enforcement's way while they did their job, so.
So to you, it felt like communication from the police department was...
Yeah. I actually, because I have the police channel on my radio, I actually heard the helicopter, the state police helicopter radio dispatch to say that they were conducting a search, so I knew that was going on. I keyed in on that much of the conversation, was right on the heels of that communication that the chief called me and said, "This is what the situation is. And we're not quite sure what we're dealing with, so let's in abundance of caution, just shelter everybody in place." So, I mean, teaching and learning was still able to go on, it was just a case of we weren't gonna have a whole lot of movement until we knew what we were dealing with.
So going back to the earlier point that you made, given that it's very important that we have some open lines, I don't know how many people go to our website and check it, but is this an opportunity maybe to put a little note there to remind folks that, you know, we're gonna, just like John said, I mean, we're doing our best to inform the students and you...
Right.
As soon as we know anything. If, you know, you can refrain from calling the schools so that our lines are open for our own communication.
Right, and if you do get that voice, if a call comes in from us, listen to the voicemail, or, you know, look at the email, 'cause they sent it out both ways. And it would also be an opportunity, because our Blackboard Connect system also has the capability of us being able to send out text messages. Obviously, if people give us their cell phone numbers, they need to understand that if I, and allow us to text, it could be a data charge on their end. And there are like three phone numbers, three people that have checked that off as, as something that we could do. But if people were willing to allow us to text, then I could reduce a message into 120 characters or less.
Yeah.
And...
That's actually, that's another good point. I'm not sure that any carrier charges for text anymore. And I might, I can't remember any, so maybe we can just survey folks once again and see if they're willing to, for emergencies, allow us to...
Some people who get those plans as you go, there's a data charge within them, or, you know, you go over a certain data point, and depending on how much Snapchatting your kids are doing on their plans, I guess, or whatever, you know, that could be a cause for concern, but obviously, I wouldn't use that venue unless it was warranted.
Yeah.
I know as an adjunct instructor for AIC, I get text messages from them when there's security issues on campus.
Yeah, 'cause I'll confess that I actually would like to get the text message, but I did not even know that it was an option, so...
I'll check with David about what the procedure would be for parents to be able to opt into that, and then we'll get that information out.
Cool, thank you.
So, that said, net metering. Andrew is back.
Okay, thanks for inviting me back.
There was a memo in your packet with regard to this?
What I did quickly was based on what the superintendent and I discussed, put together a couple scenarios, based on what the chair asked about being conservative. Yep. So basically, so the approximate current usage for the schools is about 667,000 kilowatt-hours annually. The LED retrofit, excuse me, that your consultant is working on is targeted to be as much as 76,000. Sometimes these, in our experience, don't hit all of that, but, so let's be as conservative as possible. So your net use would drop down to about 591,000. So what we're suggesting is you choose in between 550 or 575. The one thing to remember with a solar project is each year, as we discussed last time, it will degrade by about half a percent. And of course, you've got some planned new schools, things that might happen, so your uses might go up. So the chart at the bottom just shows the 20-years savings, based on the discount of 20% of, and based on our estimate of electricity prices. So for 20 years, for basically 550,000 kilowatt-hours, you have 501, the other is 527 over 20 years. So there's $26,000 difference, and then, of course, it grows for 25 and 30 years. You would only sign a 20-year agreement. There could be a renewal after 20 years for five years, but you can't sign anything longer than 20 years under Massachusetts law. And that's basically the quick summary.
So you're saying that 550 to 575 would be a reasonable range for us?
Yeah, I think so. And then you're only committing to, so if you say 575, you're only committing to that, so you leave plenty of room. And each year, in the second tapes that I gave you, it degrades, so that as you go out, and maybe you'll do other improvements or things like that, you may have more margin in if you build a new school. But, I mean, the retrofit, I can't tell you what percentage they get, but depends on the time they put it in, so I think you want to leave yourself some room.
All right.
And you could do anything in between either, so it's fine with us, I was just giving you a range.
So, you know, we asked the same question last time, but just to reiterate, if we commit to a number and we don't use that, how likely is it that we're gonna be able to, through you, find some other off-takers?
I think that it's very likely you could find other off-takers, because the program, the solar program, the net metering program, has basically come to an end, so that each town has the ability to host up to 10 megawatts, not that the town can use it. So the town of Granby's gonna take approximately, where are we, Henry, about 500,000 or 550? So the town of Granby's gonna take, they're gonna even take a higher percentage, 'cause they wanna get closer to get as much savings as possible. But we'll go out, and we're permitted, but it's a, it's a, it's a hot commodity. So in 15 years, I don't know how things are gonna change, but because of the net metering program right now, when they change the law in the State House, and you would be subject to entering the program, or the PPA would be subject to getting it approved in the State House, 'cause they have to raise the cap, which is supposed to happen at the end of this month, it's only, they're only gonna put it in for 20 years, such that this is such a good program, that if there is another program, it won't be advantageous. So instead of 20%, I think the next programs might be 5 to 7% that you'd see in discounts. So to answer your question, I think it's fairly likely that you can find other groups that would, that you could then take. But, you know, you're talking about such a small number that, you know, let's say you take 575, or maybe 580, or whatever, and you're 20,000 kilowatt-hours over, or something like that. You're allowed to, twice a year, change the Schedule Z, which is for the project, so we could find other public entities that could then pick it up. So there's plenty of towns that would, could pick up that small an amount. If you're saying 2 megawatts or 3 megawatts, it's harder to find more groups that would take that, but for a small amount, it's not gonna be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
And the higher we, say if we went with the 575, the higher we go, the bigger the savings. It's likely riskier it is. The lower we go...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're entailing, in my personal opinion, very much risk at all.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is this. In my mind, if, our current baseline is 666-plus, right? And we are estimating that we're gonna reduce it by about 76,000 through this LED program. That's great. But what I'm thinking is, well, our consumption may actually be reduced by some other means as well, whether it's, I don't know, it, certain sections turn off, cut off the power after a certain hour because we don't, you know, we don't use them, or some other things. If that happens, the initial calculation actually doesn't hold anymore.
That 76,000 kilowatts is really allowing for that sort of motion detection, and lights phasing on and off, not just the fact that the fixtures are being changed, 'cause they will, they will do that in addition, you know, having sensors or whatever makes sense.
'Cause as much as I realize that the more we spend, the more we save, it's that big Y, right?
Sure.
I also hope that there might be some other way for us to reduce our consumption to begin with. But if that's not, if this is too idealistic, that doesn't really happen, especially in the 20-year window, we don't really see that happening, then I think we can go with any range from 550 to 575 and get done.
If you're looking at, you know, if you're looking at changing to more energy-efficient boilers here or things like that, you see some savings, but that's not until a couple years down the road in your capital plan anyway.
Right.
So again, to maximize your savings now, and to know that, you know, it might require another off-taker, I don't see a whole lot of risk at 575, to be honest with you.
I agree.
I'll go with 575.
Who's responsible for finding the off-taker? Would it be the school district, or would it be...
The school, technically, you'll be responsible, but it's in everyone's interest.
Can we make you responsible?
Not under the contract, because then you would be signing a 20-year agreement.
I'm just wondering the, just... I'm just wondering the, just thinking out loud, the time entailed in finding an off-taker or off-takers in the event that...
I'm guessing that Andrew might have some suggestions for us that we could pursue.
So as long as it's not a big deal and it's, you know, there's not a big time commitment.
Yeah, I can tell you that other schools that we talked to, because this project, these projects are going to have a lot of schools involved, some of the schools are thinking that they're going to actually, their increases are going to go up more because I don't know what you do during the summer, but they're looking to utilize more summer programs, use more of the schools. Some schools are banking, or not banking, it's a bad word, some schools are expecting global warming to require more cooling during the summer in schools. You know, public schools eventually might have to have more air conditioning. But I think in terms of finding other off-takers, I don't think it's going to be that difficult. It's going to be more of a scenario where, well, the other thing is that because you're never underwater, because you're doing a 20% discount, it's money. So you can go to someone and say, for doing nothing, you have no downside at all. So it's not like you're going to a fixed price where there is some risk. There's no risk because you're getting a 20% savings on whatever the net metered credit is.
So our annual saving, and correct me if I'm just going off here.
Yeah, sure.
About 20,000, say 22, $25,000, depending on which year we look at.
Yep.
Let's say, instead of going with 550, we went with 575, which I guess we're planning on doing anyway. If we don't spend like 25,000 right there, if I do a pretty quick calculation, the risk is about a thousand to $1,300 or stuff?
Right. That's, I think that's a excellent point.
Per year?
You brought that up last time.
And that's actually basically lost from the savings that we're going to be making. So instead of saving 20 some thousand dollars, you're going to be saving, I don't know.
18, 19.
Yeah, 18,000.
Right. It's a good point. You're not going to ever be underwater or something like that unless you expect suddenly to close up the whole schools or whatever.
This could potentially be something that TMS could help you with as well because there are other districts in TMS's world that are, you know, looking into these same kinds of projects or have already done this, you know, who may wish to purchase more credits. So that certainly would be another avenue that you could explore is to ask TMS to be looking in other districts that they're in to see if perchance somebody is looking to buy more credits if that happens, so.
TMS is the consultant?
TMS is our business management consultant.
Oh, right. The ones, okay, yeah.
Yep.
So the current calculation was showing 590,000, almost 591,000 kilowatts annually. The range that we're looking at is 550 to 575. Am I hearing that the board, the committee is comfortable with 575,000 per year?
575 kilowatts.
Kilowatts, yes, not money, kilowatts. Wait a minute, is that dollars? Okay, so, you need to vote on this?
Yes.
So is there a motion? What's the motion then? We commit to 575,000?
575,000 kilowatts.
God, kilowatts.
Yep.
I'm going to get that money from you guys one way or another, I guess.
I only wish. So that you would be making a commitment to enter into our contract with Kearsarge Energy for 575 kilowatt-hours of, 575,000 kilowatt-hours of net metering annually.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
If I can remember that word.
And when would this start?
We hope to have the facility up and running July, August.
This July.
Yep. So you receive credits as soon as, you'll get back credits. So once the facility starts running, you'll get credits. Probably it'll take two months for National Grid to get it onto your bill. So then you'll get three months, a month credits.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. So we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
Good night. Thanks for coming again.
Oh, no, I'm pleased.
But this was very helpful for us to understand a little more.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next is a proposal for change of cellphone handbook language. Mr. Gavalo, turn the floor over to you.
Okay, thanks. I believe that you have the...
Yes.
The proposal in front of you that I'm going to talk to staff about in a recent, was that actually on our January staff meeting, that, you know, the first half of the school year has been, to me and also to our staff, around student use of cell phones, significant distraction that we're observing here in the school. I mean, goes without saying, probably in any school that you go to, cell phones, not only with students, but also with adults, have become such a, I mean, no better word to use than a destructive device in many cases. As good as these things can do in terms of providing this information, they can also lead to a lot of, you know, behavior incidents and a lot of unnecessary administrative calls that we're, that we're receiving from teachers. And so what we like to do is, and believe me, in 14 years or so, I don't think I ever recall, you know, bringing to the school committee any kind of revised handbook language during the course of the year. We usually wait till the springtime to present any changes to the school committee. But, you know, we as a staff really thought that this was necessary to put in place effective immediately. Now again, any type of policy is only as good as it is enforced, you know, and I sort of convey that to the staff, you know, the strength of a policy is in its enforcement. And as you can see with some of this revised language, it's not going to be easily enforced because, you know, kids are doing it in bathrooms, they're texting one another, they're using it under their desks, they're, you know, they have all kinds of slayways that they can really become destructive in the classroom. So I guess I present that to you and ask if you have any questions with regards to it. So what would we do as a staff? I would immediately send a connected call and email out to parents and let them know at last night's school committee meeting, new handbook language went into effect. That resulted in the following changes. Now, there's really two or three things there that you can see, and I think if you had it on your device, it's in red, and you might have questions with it. One is that in the middle school, you know, I talked to the teachers because there was some, you know, especially with 12 and 13-year-olds, there was some leeway that teachers were providing to students, like, well, you can use your cellphone for music, or you can use your cellphone to look up vocabulary words. And the message wasn't consistent in the classrooms. And I think really for 12 and 13-year-olds, the message has to be consistent across the board from 7:30 to 2 o'clock. We either allow it or we don't allow it. We can't have teachers, you know, pinning, you know, themselves against one another. So one change you can see there is basically forbidding cellphone use in the middle school altogether from 7:30 to 2 o'clock. They can have cellphones on them, they can't be visible or they can't be used. The second thing is around earbuds, it's around texting, as we call it during academic times. Academic times would be, actually, it's not only during academic times, it's all time, meaning that in the hallways, in between classes, during classes, students cannot be, you know, as we see it, and I'm sure, you know, Dr. Hull sees it as well, walking in a hallway, basically doing this. And it happens all the time.
Some kid was running for whatever sport, they were running through the hallways on a cellphone and said, "Hi, don't text and drive."
No, we hear text and drive. We want to do text and walk because they're bumping into one another and they're so out of tune to what's going on. And then it's the earbuds, another piece to it that, you know, relates to the photonic devices that we want to send to students that they're not going to be allowed, hopefully effective immediately. The last part of it, which is somewhat debatable, which, you know, might be open to discussion, is around the idea of, if students are not responsible for bringing cellphones to school, then I shouldn't have them on their person. And I say that because no matter what we do as a school, we get into situations with students where basically, it's my cellphone, you're not going to tell me what to do with it, and I need it. And it continues to be an administrative nightmare for us to try and enforce. And I don't know what else to say, you know, other than it has to be kept at home. And if a student really wants to, I mean, we looked at cellphones for many years, and we have communication here that if a parent needs to get in touch with a student, they can use the phone here, whatever it might be, and we hope that we won't have to resort to something like that. But I can recall, think of a couple of times already this year where we got to the point where we were going to do it, and the only reason why I didn't do it was because I told staff that I didn't have any language that allowed me to do it. And I didn't want to go down the path of arbitrarily making rules, enforcing them, when I don't have the approval or any kind of language to, you know, to base my decision-making. So I don't know if you have any questions at all, but like I said, it's pretty clear there in terms of what we're presenting.
There's mention there about that they're allowed in the classroom, but teacher discretion, what, how does that, how does that work?
Ah, it works in a number of ways. When I say that, I can tell you in Spanish class, it works with world language teachers allowing students to use cellphones for looking up vocabulary terms, for transcribing possible passages, from checking their work from English to French or French to English, whatever it might be. It's almost like a computer that the kids have in the classroom, but it's their portable device that they're able to do all this thing on. In social studies class, social studies teachers, many of them, I think all of them do current events for the first five or 10 minutes of class, gives it on their cellphone, looking for current events that they can talk about. So, you know, in high school, we do allow for cellphone with teacher discretion, art class, with music, you know.
But then it just, it just opens up where you, where you close the door. It's just, it seems to me you wish you could just say that, cellphone, bring it, have it off. I mean, there are professional places now where you work, the phone is off, so you put it off, it's, it's just off.
Yeah.
And yeah, maybe when they go to lunch, just make clear, when they go to lunch, yeah, you can use your cellphone.
Yeah.
That's it.
I agree.
But I don't know, it's a different world now. People can't be, they can't be away from that for two minutes.
Yeah.
They just can't be away from it.
And there are some best practices that teachers are using in the classroom that I would like specific classroom teachers to model to others in terms of what they do. One particular teacher I'm thinking about has a basket in the classroom. Put all your cellphones in the basket. You know, in many classrooms, we have pocket calculators, you know, in terms of, if you go into a math classroom, there's these big blankets with pockets that teachers are able to put their calculators in. That we had, maybe do the same, I could purchase these and we could put them in classrooms that if you sit in seat one, then it's your, you know, seat one in the pocket cellphones where you put your cellphone and it's not going to be used. So there are some things that we are going to try to work on, I think, in the coming months to enforce what is really, I think, has gotten out of hand in classrooms as of late.
My feeling is, you guys are here every day, the teachers are here every day, I'm going to defer to whatever you think is best. And if a teacher feels in her classroom she's okay with cellphone use, then fine in her classroom, and if the teacher next door isn't, then they're in charge. And, you know, if you think you need language in there to enforce, then I'm deferring to what you guys think is best.
So I'm actually good, I understand the intent, I'm good with it. I think cellphones can be a distraction outside of school, and that's what you were saying too. The only, only section that I'm looking at is the last section that started out. If there is a need to totally ban these phones, I am debating that in my head, whether or not, then we should come back to the school committee, we just say, you know what, we're just going to, we're just going to make a decision not to allow this, anything other than... The one thing that I actually am also concerned about, especially in light of things that happened today, there are times when cellphones are handy. I mean, today was a case where there was nothing happening in our school system, but if anything happens, then, you know, that's basically one advantage that we got through the years, that technology is helping us to communicate instantly, and we don't have to go to the central office to be able to make a phone call. So there's a balance there. Listening to what Deanna is saying, the challenge is that we're not here. I don't know how easy or difficult it is to monitor, administer, tell kids not to use it, how much they listen at all times. So I can understand that there is some probably friction caused by that as well at times. So, so part of my mind is telling me to defer entirely to you the way you're suggesting it, the other side is saying, well, you know, this is a policy that is signed out by the school committee. And that last section is basically a complete reversal of the previous section of it. If it's going to happen, then I'm wondering whether it should happen through the school committee as well.
Well, yeah, okay, I see your point there. Well, I'm not, I guess I'm trying to understand your concern. Are you talking about that last sentence about school administration prohibiting? I don't think it's a blanket prohibition.
I don't think so either.
It is, for example, under the bullying statute, if stuff occurs online or on devices, even if it's off-campus, but it has what the legalese would call a nexus to school, we have to investigate it. So if there are texts or whatever going back and forth, that can be considered as bullying, one of the consequences for the aggressor could be your cellphone is banned from school.
This seems to be a blanket prohibition.
I didn't take it as a blanket.
What is the intent?
Well, you say that, it's not intended to be a blanket, I mean, I, you're right, maybe that language is a little harsher and it can be sort of worded differently.
I took it as if students have, you know, if you get to the point where you've tried all of this and it's not working, then you can reserve the right to say to students, whatever student or students has, you know, frequently...
Yeah. I mean, should I be stopping the language by saying it can prohibit individual students?
I would be more comfortable with that. I, you know me by now that I hope that our policies, and that's what we're working on right now, to make it as clear as possible, so it's not really an interpretation matter, it's, you know, this is a policy, we're applying it. If we say individual students, that would be then the discretion of the administration based on what they are seeing, then it goes to what Deanna is saying. You guys are close to it, you, you know, you know, who's using and who's abusing, then you can take precautions based on that. But yes, if you can add something that's an individual student, I would feel comfortable.
Yeah, I think individual, adding the word individual changes the language completely and clarifies it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion, conversation? So is there a motion to, voting tonight, right?
Right. We would vote to approve the language as amended.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve? Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions, comments? All good? Okay.
Give it a try. We will.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good luck, Tom.
Call us if it doesn't work. On your cellphone.
Send a text. There you go. The next item, the teacher mentoring program handbook, we tabled it at the last meeting. I'm going to ask you to table it one more time between I being out a couple of days last week and Mr. Gavalo having shoulder surgery. We still have yet to put those final touches on it, so we will come back to you at the next meeting with that. You have in your packet a memorandum with regard to staffing for our ELL students. I have been reviewing the caseload and staffing for our current ELL students with Mary Burks, who is one of our interim co-directors of pupil services. And currently, we have a .8 FTE teacher who receives a stipend to administer the program. We have a memorandum of agreement with the association that would allow for the teacher to see an increase in that stipend to 5,000 for next year. The teacher has requested that, you know, we take a look at the, at the service delivery. There are some recommended levels of service that have been put out by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with regard to service delivery for English language learners. They are not requirements, they are recommendations at this point. When I sat down and looked at all of the data with regard to the students' levels and what they're being serviced, we're probably looking at an increase of at least from .8 to .9 FTE-wise for next wise for next fiscal year. We're not quite to the recommended levels at this juncture in time in service delivery that we need to be.
What is the recommended level?
It depends on the level of student's language acquisition, so it's, obviously, the less proficient they are in English, the more sessions and more minutes per week that you have to, that they recommend that you deliver. Obviously, as they, we get them towards proficiency, then the services are stepped down. So, so they, again, they're not mandates, but they certainly are recommended services for students. So, looking forward to FY17, we will probably be looking at an increase in this position to at least a .9 FTE. Mary and I are going to spend a little more time looking at groupings of students and whatnot, and working with the teacher on that, to be able to just finalize that as we go into the FY17 budget, but we had tabled this at a prior meeting because I didn't have all the data that I needed, so I just wanted to apprise you where we are at this juncture in time with that, so.
Since you mentioned that it's not a mandate, what's the, what's the ramification if we don't do it?
Next year, you will be having what's called a coordinated program review, which means a team of people will be coming from the DESI to look at our special education Title I ELL programs and to make sure that we are in compliance with regulations.
Okay.
We most likely, without doing this increase in FY17, will be considered to be out of compliance with their recommendations, but again, they're not a mandate. I'm guessing that at some point, it may become a mandate, so obviously, if we can work our way closer to that, I think that makes certainly perfect sense.
So, and it was, shall I ask a question for at least my education and everybody else watching it, but it seems like there is no mandate, but there is a compliance issue.
Right.
Doesn't mean that there is, just because there is no mandate, we are compliant.
Right.
Whatever, we can do whatever we want, we cannot.
Right. They're, they're really looking for us to at least come close to the regular, come closer than we currently are to the regulations or to the requested service delivery model, so. So I think the CPR audit would certainly take a look at that and would certainly say we need to be more in line with what we're recommending for service delivery.
So the .9 plus the stipend should do well for the program?
Yes. Like I say, as part of the FY17 staffing, we'll take a look at this as well, but this was an issue that we had tabled at a prior meeting because I was still waiting for the data, so I just wanted to let you know where we were at at this juncture in time, so.
Do we need any action from us tonight?
Nope.
Okay. Well, thank you. Makes sense. All right.
Okay, next on the list is the after-school program. Chris Taggart from the Collaborative has been working to get the program up and running. We anticipate that that will start in March. He met with both Ms. Champagne and Ms. Barthlett to talk about the implementation of the program in their buildings. And they, he's also gone to both schools faculty meetings. He went in January to talk about the program with the teachers, to invite people to apply for the directorship, for the director of the program, as well as looking for instructors to staff the programs. We most likely, probably have the person who's going to oversee the program be housed at West Street School, along with partnering with somebody with CES to keep, you know, sort of that connection in line, and I know that people have been invited to apply. Some of the concerns that were raised by teachers and also raised by one of the principals, and Chris didn't say which one, I was talking with him in the car on the way to Boston the other morning, so he mentioned to me that people were concerned about children who might not be able to afford the fees. So what has happened in Greenfield, the Collaborative as an entity cannot do a sliding scale for this kind of activity, that's prohibited. So what Greenfield does is, Greenfield actually collects the fees and then makes decisions around, you know, a sliding scale. And so people make out their checks or whatever to Greenfield. You currently have an after-school revolving account anyway, a little over $5,000 in the balance in it. I don't see that we would have a flood of low-income kids who would, you know, eat that all up in a single mush in any way, shape, or form, but it would be a way to obviously use it to funnel the fees and then that what would happen is the Collaborative would just bill us in the lump for any salaries that they would pay out, as well as any supplies for the program. So what they would then do is then just invoice us, then we have the ability to be able to, you know, using free and reduce criteria or, you know, some criteria to be able to either waive or to at least reduce the individual fee for a student whose family has a designated, demonstrated need for that. So that's what Chris was recommending. I told him, obviously, since this is part of your offerings budget, I would have to bring this to you for approval to do this methodology rather than CES being the conduit to which the fees flow.
And again, what kind of fees are they talking? What was the, I don't remember anything, I don't know what they, must have talked to the staff about it.
In terms of the...
What would it cost a parent?
Cost a parent, it'd be like $10 a session, I think.
Seventeen?
Yeah. I'd have to look at the agreement, the MOA.
Seventeen dollars for two hours per day per kid?
No, isn't that much. Am I, am I thinking of double?
It's less.
It's okay. I might have added a $10.
Like $10?
Because I'm thinking of two kids, 12.
10 or 12 per, per session. I'd have to look at the MOU, to be honest with you. It was somewhere in the $10 to $12 range per session for a child, so.
And what's a session? What's the definition of a session?
Um, we're probably talking at least two hours, and maybe even more, two to three hours, depending on how the program is structured, and there were a variety of things. It would depend on the number of instructors, the number of offerings that could be held.
Can I remove myself from the table so I can help?
Oh, you can give information, that's okay.
Give information, that's a question.
Because I'm not deliberating, only because I, I, I know this well.
Yeah, help me, help me remember because I've forgotten, how's that?
Only because I, you know, run 13 other ones.
Yeah.
How it works is, it's one price per day, so even if there's two enrichments per day plus homework center, it's one price for the day. So it doesn't matter how many enrichments they go to, it only matters how many days they go to. And the program can go from the end of school till whatever time each school decides, so whether that's, could be five o'clock, it could be six o'clock, whatever, whatever those schools decide, that's what matters, but that price is per day. So if, if a family signs up for two days out of the week, then they pay whatever it is, if it's 12 or whatever it is, $12 for each day, for the entire session. Sessions are different because they could go, it depends on what the site coordinator sets up.
Right, and what's being offered.
Right, and, and for right now, obviously, starting in March, it would just be that one, March to June.
So my child goes for two days, I pay $24, but I decide to, parent A decides to pick up the child at four, the other one decides to pick up at six, doesn't really make any difference as long as the duration of the program is up to six o'clock. One can leave early, so it doesn't really make any difference in terms of the fee. Is that correct?
Right, well, yes.
And that, that all gets worked out in fine detail, so.
Okay.
So it does depend, because there are some parents who will only do half of the day.
Yep, no, I understand, I just wanted to, since you mentioned that. So one quick question in terms of the revolving fund. I'm testing my math here now. So we are going to charge the fee based on...
Right, they would give us...
Based on what they can pay.
Well, yeah, what we, I mean, there's a base fee and it's, I, I think, $12, it rings a bell, again, I'd have to look at the MOU to tell specifically, but the fee is outlined in the, in the memorandum of understanding that we have signed off, off on with the Collaborative, so the fee is outlined in there.
Right.
But we would have the ability to offer a sliding scale, and certainly, we could use the balance that's in that after-school activity fund to be able to do that, so it would not have an impact on the budget proper.
And that's where I'm going with that. So because it seems to me that this is almost a school being a conduit, just taking the money and passing to the provider of the service, and we're not really retaining any of that money as it passes on.
Right.
We have, you know, $5,000 to $6,000 in our current revolving fund, great, but it seems to me that then we're going to be spending money from that revolving fund, is there any way to replenish it? How do we do that?
Well.
Doesn't get replenished.
Just so happens. The commissioner's memo this last week was talking about Massachusetts 21st Century Community Learning Centers, which is a competitive grant program that allows us to either extend the school day or provide outside-of-school time for students. And one of the other districts that TMS works in Winchenden has actually gotten these funds to run after-school programs to extend learning time for students, and has, you know, offered kind of quite a robust program through that. There is a current round of funding that is about to be released that districts can apply for, and they are going to give priority to districts who have not received funding in prior rounds. So there is a conference in, at Devon's next Tuesday that I'm going to go to and just learn more about, you know, what it takes to write one of those grants and whatever. So we could potentially receive one of those grants, you know, and be able to use it to offset that and/or other things that we might be doing for kids outside of school.
And, and we also, as part of the program, we train site coordinators to, to find other ways through fundraising or events that they can have to help fund the program as well.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to make sure that nobody gets denied, you know, for any reason, because, you know, maybe they're timid about coming forward, you know, I just want to make sure the program is open to everybody and we don't put up any obstacles, we don't make them sign, you know, 5,000 sheets of paper and to see if they qualify and stuff like that.
I mean, obviously, we would have to have some documentation of demonstrated financial need, and want to kind of figure that out. But I think this is a way for us to be able to offer that option to students is by us being the conduit and actually collecting the fees and then paying them out through an invoicing system with, with the Collaborative. And in the meantime, to try and find some ways to either fundraise or to seek out grants like the 21st Century Grant, that could be helpful in that quest.
Okay. Do we need any action on this one?
It would be just to make a motion to approve the arrangement with the Collaborative that we would be the ones to take the fees from the students and then that the Collaborative would bill us through an invoice system, we would pay a bulk invoice versus them doing it, so.
Okay, is there a motion? Is that money going to go in the revolving, present revolving account?
Yeah, well, it's where we would park it until we're invoiced out, because obviously, you don't want to lose that at the end of a fiscal year either.
So is there a motion to approve the agreement and to allow us to receive the fees before they are dispensed?
So.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't stay.
Okay, we have one extension, sorry, I forgot about that.
You ready for some fun and frolic coming up budget?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to fire up the projector, so if you want to have the farting of the waters, I always feel a little bit like Moses when I do this.
Judy, you know, a little late, but what I was thinking is, I was going through the deck, maybe we can do it later too, because the deck actually is very clear, you can, you can follow it anyway. Maybe other folks in town, finance committees on the board, others can benefit from this one too, and, you know, maybe we can invite them here sooner than later if it's going to help our collective education.
Well, let's see, I'll phrase this delicately. I got a sense from the last time we visited with the finance committee that they, at least on the part of one member, that there wasn't a whole lot of interest in learning all this background stuff, so long as...
Well, you know...
Even fight with their parameters for budget.
Hospitality begins with invitation.
It does, absolutely.
I would rather have a decline on record than not have an invitation extended.
I can certainly do that. In our meeting on Wednesday night, I understand, to vote their recommendation for the school project.
Huh?
So, let me just sort of sonter in and say, hi, I have an engraved invitation for me to talk to Shaw.
As long as you make sure it's sonked. Sache.
Yeah, sache, and I'll have to find out where, I didn't find out the where, they are removable piece.
Oh, you can text them.
Ah!
For after-school time.
After-school, after-school.
Always during your lunch.
Yes.
Unless, unless we're in shelter in place, which I also discovered is not a term that people are familiar with in this district, so we have a little learning to do about the difference between lockdown and shelter in place, but that's okay. It's all part of the emergency operations plan process, so.
You know, what was interesting is that Mass Live had quick pieces of news. They had pretty nice information in there, just, you know, to, to let people know what was happening, students were free to move within the school, but they were not going to go out, and quick, quick bits of information, so.
Yep. All righty, so what I thought we'd do tonight, because at the next meeting, you'll get to see the full onslaught of the senior leadership team armed with their numbers and their requests, so I thought before we get into that, there's a lot of language that I tend to throw out that I want to make sure that everybody understands, and so that was my whole purpose in doing this in terms of, because I know for some of you, this is new stuff, you know, for it's like, the big learning curve begins.
So is it test tonight or next night?
Uh, there'll be a quiz before we start next time, so. So we're going to take a look at the budget through two lenses tonight. First, I want to just talk about the overall, how a budget is put together, and we're in the process, I'm in the process of working with TMS to sort of restructure our budget, particularly as we head into sharing software with the town, you know, in terms of accounts and all of that kind of stuff. So how TMS looks at budgets, and they trained me well in Deltro Town to do this, is that there's this sort of whole big budget known as the all-funds budget, which is every single funding source and every single expenditure we make, whether it's made within the local budget or is what's known as the LEA, or if it's made through a grant or a revolving account or whatever else, because we feel that in the interest of full transparency, that everybody should know what the pots of money are, how they get used, and then how all of this all fits together. So there's sort of this two, two ways of looking at it, the all-funds budget and then the local LEA budget. There are four types of budgets. We're going to start with a zero-based budget, which will also sort of be a needs-based budget. We'll talk about what it means to have level service, level funded, and a new term I learned in Grand Bay last year, the gap budget. So we'll talk a little bit about that, but let's talk about all-funds and LEA first. This is where we look at the revenue streams and where the expenditures are going to be coming from in an overall budget plan. So, under the local budget, what feeds that from a revenue perspective is Chapter 70 Funding, which is the state aid to education, which was put together through the Education Reform Act of 1993. It has not been updated since 1993, so there has been a whole lot of work, MAS, Superintendents Association actually put out a white paper, I was part of the task force, that tried to make some recommendations around this. The big impacts are special education costs, the infusion of technologies into, into schools, and health, obviously, health insurance has been a huge driver in budget increases. And this formula has not been updated to take in the kinds of increases that these things have put, you know, put strains on local districts. So we're trying to get them, get the state to understand that, as a matter of fact, it was, and we'll talk about foundation budget in a, in a little bit, there was actually a whole commission that went out and did a traveling road show in the Commonwealth around foundation budget. That was led by Sonia Chaz, the, I can't remember, I'm just going to hyphenate her last name and I'm not going to say it right, so. But anyway, there were a couple of folks on both the House and Senate Ways and Means Committees that led this charge. We haven't seen their recommendations necessarily take shape in the first iteration of the budget from the governor, but, you know, folks bring C trial. So, you know. So the second revenue stream for the local budget is obviously the local contribution. And our finance committee tends to look at something that's known as net minimum spending, which is the absolute minimum or the floor that a town can contribute. You can always contribute more. You can't contribute less without a penalty, but the finance committee tends to look at net minimum spending plus an override that was passed, what, about eight years ago or something like that, of about three hundred and five thousand dollars? And that's what they consider to be their contribution to the schools. Add to that all of the grants that we receive from the federal and state governments in our revolving accounts, that sort of comprises the total picture of what the budget looks like.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're saying on the net minimum spending, the town can offer up more?
Oh, absolutely. Matter of fact, most towns do.
We've gotten the minimum for years, every year.
And last year, you showed us the different amounts every town around here was contributing.
Yeah. And last year, they did give us a teenths more.
Yeah, I think we need to file that.
So to be clear, yeah, it won't make a difference though, but. The starting point for the finance committee is the minimum and then the 305.
Right. So that's what they consider to be their extra contribution.
So I don't know, I'm just thinking logically, why are we only getting the minimum when we're running in deficit every year?
Well, from their perspective, we're not getting the minimum because of the 305. It's just basic overrides, the minimum plus the 305, whatever it might be.
A minimum is a minimum is a minimum.
Right.
An override is above the E.
Now, technically, when an override vote happens in municipality, that it may be for a certain purpose. It's then compounded every year because that's considered part of the tax base and it can be disseminated however. They have said that eight years ago, whenever they did this, they did it for the purpose of funding schools, so they've sort of left it sacred, but they've also left it stagnant.
Exactly.
It doesn't grow with the time.
Right, right. So, you know, so there's a lot to be argued on both sides of the fence with regard to that. So the state budget process, where we are right now is what's known as House One Budget, which is the governor's budget. And he promised a 4.3% increase to local funding into education. And the town side, all town administrators and mayors are jumping happily because unrestricted local aid, which is what the town gets, did increase by 4.3%. However, Chapter 4, Chapter 70 didn't quite make that number. It's only increased by 1.6%. I have a feeling that the governor's penchant for lifting the cap on charter schools is somewhere in that 4.3% number, and it's not even.
So again, I have a question. If the unrestricted aid to towns has been increased by 4%, couldn't that logically increase our minimum?
Hypothetically.
Wouldn't that be an argument for increasing the net minimum spending?
Hypothetically, yes.
Again, just planting seed.
No, that's a good question, but my understanding is, and correct me, the minimum is, we are given the minimum by this thing anyway. That's based on a partnership.
Right, they have to.
So they have to. It's not like something that the town says, this is the minimum we're going to give to you.
I understand that.
But that's a floor, it's not a seal.
Yeah, that's a floor.
Yes.
It's not a seal.
Yeah. I think there was a mixed story behind this, is that?
Well, we can have that for further discussion as we get further into the budget process.
Right, yeah, absolutely. So this came out last Wednesday, so House One is out, and I'll give you some information about that in a couple of seconds.
Can I just jump one more time? So Chapter 70 is directly related to educational expenditure.
Right. It cannot be used anywhere else.
Right. So when we say unrestricted aid, it may or may not be related to?
Yeah, the town could potentially just put it in the general pool of what they're going to dole out to everybody, including education. It doesn't, it isn't restricted, yeah. The one thing with unrestricted local aid is that it tends to be more subject to 9C cuts, which is the governor's powers under the law to adjust the budget halfway through any fiscal year. You know, revenues look like they're not coming in where they were supposed to, the governor can invoke 9C cuts. And often, most governors don't touch Chapter 70 at that point, but they will touch unrestricted local aid, which I tell you, if the town pot shrinks, gets what? Our pot tends to shrink. My first year in Belcher Town, we had that problem, there was a 9C cut, and we had to figure out some ways to help the town out in terms of the cuts that were being asked to be made would have been catastrophic in some of their departments, so we took a little bit of it as well. When you get to that point, it really is one big happy pot of money. So that's one thing to think about. So the next iteration and debate starts this week, is that the budget then gets debated by the full House, and the House will potentially adjust the numbers up or down from the governor's. In the past few years, I've seen very little movement from the initial governor's numbers. If there has been a move, it's been very slight. Once House Two goes through, then it goes to the Senate, same thing. They come up with a version, they make adjustments. Again, it could be up or down from the House, depending on how they look at the numbers. It will then go to conference committee, they'll reconcile the differences between the House and Senate versions, they send it on to the governor, who eventually signs it, but it is always subject to a line item veto. He has line item veto power. This past year, because the governor was new, he had extra time to sign it, so we actually did not get a signed budget until mid-July. I think you'll see it closer to June 30th. It used to be earlier in the going, but it seems to be later and later and later all the time, which is part of the reason why Granby chooses to do their financials.
Later as possible.
Later and as late as they can because they want to see if they can get at least to the conference version of the budget from the state so that they know what they're dealing with for state reverence. So this is a process we will monitor as we go through, taking a look at what our budget's going to look like and how we're going to deal with all of this. So currently, where we stand, and I've got a little light reading for you in case you have trouble sleeping at night, this will put you right out. This foundation budget is a complex thing to think about. It has to do with our enrollments, it has to do with inflation rates, it has to do with wages, it has to do with housing values. It's a pretty complex set of alchemy rhythms, but this was probably the most concise document, it's only three or four pages, from the DESI that explains what the foundation budget is. So I just thought this might be helpful to you in terms of understanding how foundation budgets are calculated. We would be here for a very long time if I did that whole thing for you tonight, so I'll leave that to you for reading. Based on the governor's budget, cherry sheets have been issued, and cherry sheets are called cherry sheets because they used to be snail mailed in hot pink paper. I didn't have any hot pink paper because now they're done electronically, but anyway, they still, we still call them cherry sheets, even though they're not on cherry pink paper anymore. So there are two sides to the cherry sheet. There is the revenue side, and then there is the expense side. And as you can see, there are some columns that have been left blank at this particular point in time, and those will get filled in. There'll be new iterations that, you know, I'll be pulling down from the Department of Revenue's website as they come out. So as you can see, on the revenue side, the total estimated receipts for schools, you can see that there is a decrease in Chapter 70, there is a decrease in charter school tuition reimbursement, and there's a decrease of school choice receiving tuition. So we've got, you know, a decrease in revenue as has been described by the governor. There is an increase in revenue, you can see the unrestricted general government aid, you can see that increase in there. Veterans benefits is stagnant, state-owned land has increased, usually get, you know, some offset if you have state-owned land because obviously the state doesn't pay taxes. And then exemption for vision and blind services and elderly services, you can see there's an uptick there. There's also a slight uptick in libraries. So general government aid is up a little bit, but the total estimated receipts overall are down, and they're mostly because they're down on the school side. If you look at the flip side of the cherry sheet, you can see what is assessed to the town of Granby. So you can see, for example, retired teachers' health insurance, that's decreased a little bit. An air pollution district, that's had an increase to it. RMV non-renewal surcharge, that's stagnant. Regional transit, that's decreased just a touch. Special education charges against receipts has remained the same, but we've had an uptick in school choice sending tuition and an uptick in charter school sending tuition. So the receipts are up by over a hundred thou, I mean, the charges are up by over a hundred thousand dollars. So again, when you're looking at the cherry sheet, you have to look at both sides of the ledger because obviously this factors into, these are things that are assessed to the town. We get school choice incoming, the town gets charged, school choice outgoing. We get charter school tuition reimbursement, the town gets charged the charter school tuition. So those are all things that, as we look at this total budget picture, both sides of the cherry sheet are really important. So again, as it goes through the legislative process, I'll be giving you updates on where we stand with regard to all of that.
Judy, the fiscal '16 cherry sheet estimate, that's the fiscal year we're in right now.
That's correct.
So these are happening, at least part of it, as we speak. The 2017 governor's budget proposal is what we just got this week.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So based on that, do you know why the school choice receiving tuition is going down? Is it based on numbers estimated?
Yeah, it would have been done based on October 1 counts. So the October 1 count from the prior year, not for, obviously, fiscal '17, but the October 1 count we just took, there evidently must be a decrease in the number of students choicing in and an increase in the number of students choicing out. So that's why those numbers are the way they are. So then, this is in your Google Drive, it'll just take a second to percolate, but there is, the DESI puts these out, and again, these will be updated as they go through. I set it for Granby, but you can see, this has several tabs on it, so, someday in TMS land is working. So it talks about the foundation budget in one tab, it talks about municipal contribution and so on. You can look again at the details of all of this. But you can see some of the comparisons that DESI has put together. You know, our enrollment for FY '17 is lower than our enrollment for FY '16. Our foundation budget has dropped by quite a bit because of all of the factors that go into the formula. Our required district contribution is also down a little bit. Chapter 78 is up a tick, a little uptick there, but not by much. And the required net school spending is down. So you can kind of see, and again, this is stuff that you can kind of poke around in here and just see how all these pages are all linked together. You can see how, once they put the Chapter 70 formula into this and the foundation budget formula. This tab that has foundation budget in it sort of shows you how they calculate that. They calculate it by way of, you know, the number of students at each grade level or grade cluster, there's waiting for like ELL students, and then there's a formula that's applied for each one of the DESI function codes, administration, instructional, leadership, teaching, professional development, instructional equipment and technology, guidance services, pupil services, and so on and so forth. And you can see how they assign some numerical values to that and then, you know, multiply it out by the number of students by each of the function codes. So when you get down to the very bottom of it and all the way over, and my screen resolution is kind of off, so it takes me a little bit to scroll through, but you can see the foundation budget, so the per pupil cost is nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
You go all the way up, I'm assuming?
Sure.
On that side, yeah. So it's showing 777 students?
Right.
For next year.
That would be students who actually are Granby residents, who are actually attending Granby schools. It would not include any students who are tuitioned in. It would not include students who are choiced in because the sending town is being assessed or is, their foundation budget is being based on what they're sending out.
It doesn't show the school choice out either, right?
It would show the school choice, some of the school choice out, but not all, depending on when, again, when people choice out. Because the state takes a read of your enrollments, and these numbers fluctuate during the course of a fiscal year as well. There's the October 1 count, which is what the initial budget plan is based on, but then there's a January count, there's a March count, so every quarter, there's another dip in, which can sometimes cause shifts in what actually you do receive during that fiscal year in some of these areas like school choice.
One last question on the foundation budget. Do you know the status of the effort to change the calculation of foundation budget?
Funny you should ask that question. A little more reading material for you. There was this Sonia Chang Diaz, there we go, I know I'd get the name out eventually. There's a Foundation Budget Review Commission. I went to their public hearing in Northampton last spring. They sort of did a worldwide tour of the state and just got a lot of feedback from a lot of people, made some recommendations as to how this whole foundation budget formula could and should be changed. Again, the governor's budget doesn't necessarily reflect any of these recommendations to any great degree. So, you know, where that stands in terms of the governor, I know that several of my colleagues and I have reached out to people like Dan Rosenberg, saying, you know, what's happening with the recommendations in this report and what does this mean for the state budget? And when it gets to your chamber, what are you going to do about this? So those conversations have begun, as well as the conversation in earnest about the charter school cap lift. Because particularly in this region, we're very concerned about what that could mean for rural districts like Granby. Because we actually took a bigger hit in charter schools than we took in school choice in Chapter 7.
So there was a, we're going to get to it later in the conversation, the meeting, but there was a conversation around charter schools.
Yeah.
Let's see, charter schools, and one more thing. At the collaborative board meeting, and what was conveyed to all of us is that Senator Rosenberg is very strongly against changes that are about to happen. I don't know what that means, whether or not he's going to have the ability to stop many of these things from happening. But he unequivocally told everyone that he is in support of public education, and he knows that western side of the state is unfairly being affected.
Right.
So the whole conversation turned into how we can, as school committees, continuously provide a feedback so that it's not like, you know, one school committee's or one school district's fight, but it's a common problem that we're all experiencing.
Yeah. And Hampshire and Franklin County superintendents have now put two letters in the Hampshire Gazette. One was signed by 16 of the 19 superintendents, myself included.
Yes, sir.
The first letter, which the Mass Charter School folks The first letter, which the mass charter school folks came back with a retort, to which three of us chose to put our response in there. And Stan was looking for some information. So, Bill Dale, the executive director of the collaborative, has been a very strong proponent of public education and the unfair, the unfairness of the whole charter school thing. Charter school teachers do not have to be licensed. Charter schools do not have to necessarily stand to the same level of standards. You know, Bill has now circulated a third piece that several of us have responded to, and some of my colleagues with some great detail about the demographics of the students in their districts and the demographics of students in charter schools. And along racial, ethnic, ELL, and special education populations, the local distribution does not mirror the sending districts' populations by any stretch. It's a much lower percentage across the board, so.
But even before that, again, during the conversation, what was mentioned is that the initial purpose of charter schools was to provide students with very specific educational needs activities. It could be Chinese immersion, it could be PVPA, you know, where you, you know, you get a specific curriculum. It turned into this, almost as somebody called it that way, we are funding our own competitors. Because public funds go into charter schools.
Right.
And, you know, they don't have to show anything specific anymore. They just open a school, and if they look good enough, people, obviously, naturally, they tend to select those schools.
Right. And, and I think the critical thing, too, is that charter schools were first intended to be places of innovation that would share back what they had learned with public schools. That has not happened across the Commonwealth. And the test data show that they, kids don't do that significantly better on state tests than the rest of us. So, you know, I think those are some of the concerns that we have. In the eastern part of the state, superintendents have basically agreed to not get into the choice thing. You're in a larger district, you can probably play with that a little bit. We still offer a lot of choice between districts around here because we need to. You know, Hatfield, if we stopped offering school choice, Hatfield would shut their doors. You have like 900 kids in a 400 and somewhat kid district who choice into Hatfield. You know, they would shut their doors, you know, if there weren't choice offered for them. So, for us to sort of put a moratorium on the choice so that, that's, I think the governor's issue is out in the eastern part of the state, there isn't a lot of choice for families, so let's open up the charter thing so parents can have choice. But in this part of the state, we do offer choices to students that families take advantage of. And so, how can you have this whole thing in, it is not a level playing field. It just is not. Charter schools have more flexibility and less regulatory demands placed on them than public schools. So, how can you say public schools are not working when the, when the playing field is not level? So, you know, so that's the latest thing. Sometimes I think as we have these debates, I'm thinking, oh, it must be rolling over and it's going, but I don't think this is what he intended at all, but anyway. So, this spreadsheet's in your Google Drive, so you can certainly play with it as you feel the need. Or, again, if you have insomnia at 3:00 o'clock in the morning and want to say, okay, well, let me look at the chapter 70 workbook, I'll play around with it. Again, those numbers will be updated and I'll drop subsequent versions in as the budget gets taken care of.
Is that in a separate folder in Google?
It's in, I think I put it in your folder for tonight.
Okay.
Let me double check. It's macro-enabled Excel worksheet, workbook, so.
I don't see it.
Okay. I may have just dropped it in general. I'll look for where it is, or I'll set up a folder for FY '17, and maybe that's the best place to drop this to my happy place. So, moving on to the other side of the equation in terms of all-funds budget, here's a summary of the grants that we've received. We do receive an early childhood grant, which is a federal grant that supports mandated preschool special education programs. And because we are mandated by law to provide special education for children from the age of three all the way until they turn 22, we are mandated to have a preschool program that meets their needs. So, there are grant, that's what's known as an entitlement grant. Pretty much all of these are entitlement grants. They tell us the amount of dollars we are entitled to so long as we write a decent grant application, you know, and are in compliance, and show that we're in compliance with the spending requirements of the grant, we're allowed to do that. So, that helps support some of the expenses that we put out in terms of early childhood. The essential school health service grant is the state grant that supports nursing. It provides for salaries for direct services to students, it funds supplies, in part, not totally, but in part, and partnerships that are happening with DPH and other agencies. It does not support the school nurse leader salary. That has to actually come out of, that portion of her work actually has to come out of the local budget. There was a time when they did, but they've backed away from doing that. It's more into direct services now. Kindergarten enhancement grant, this is a state grant that supports full-day kindergarten. There was a 22% cut in FY '15. That was during the nine seat cuts mid-year. That cut has remained in FY '16. And again, no definitive word on FY '17 yet. So, we'll wait as the budget unfolds, and we'll probably get a little better handle on some of those numbers.
Is this in addition to the tuition?
We don't charge tuition.
No, tuition anymore. No, no, I mean, we don't, but the state is compensating us for it. So, this is a cut from that, or?
No, this is just a full-day kindergarten grant.
Okay.
So, there was a whole grant program that gave the initiative for districts to go full-day kindergarten. And this is a grant that helps us sustain that, so it does help.
On top of?
Yeah, it does help pay for some of the paraprofessionals' salaries and supplies, again, for the program, so. Public law, 94142 is a federal special education law, and it's a grant that comes from the feds to the state, to us, to support special education programming. There's a special education improvement grant, which is a state grant for funding program enhancements. Can't be used to fund existing programs, but it can be used to try and do some extra things for folks. It can also help with some professional development for special education staff. Title I is a federal grant that is also an entitlement. It provides extra support in reading and math for low-income students. And Kristin, who's here, is paid in part by Title I because she, part of her day is being a Title I math teacher. And the numbers for inclusion and the number of the grant is driven by free and reduced lunch for that particular thing. And the funding is pretty restrictive in terms of what we can and cannot spend it on. And, you know, there's requirements for parent engagement and all of those kinds of things. That's where the million minutes of reading sort of stemmed from. That was in part a Title I parent engagement night. And I think there's a family math night in our future of some sort. And at some point, Kristin and I will sit down and figure that out and let you know how that, how that goes as well. Title II-A is a federal teacher quality grant. It supports professional development in the improvement of teacher practice. It's used mostly to help support, or will be being used mostly to help support teacher mentoring, as well as, you know, some professional development, curriculum work, and those kinds of things.
Is that a grant that we're getting?
Yes. Again, this is, these are entitlement grants, so we're told how much we're eligible for so long as we write a grant that's within the guidelines, it gets approved and we get the funds. Revolving accounts.
Yes.
One more question. That Title II-A, is it part of the allocation for professional development in our budget? Or is it?
It is the allocation, other than what you are contractually responsible for.
Okay.
Any other professional development comes out of this grant. You have no funds in your local budget, other than what you are contractually obligated to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Revolving accounts. Here is page one of all of the revolving accounts that we have. First is one we just talked about, the after-school activities revolving account. Revolving accounts within the budget are items that every fiscal year, you either spend your money in your local budget, or what you have left over, it's turned back to the town if you have anything left over. Granby, I don't think has ever.
I was going to say.
Give back, because you've had to ask for more. But a revolving account is not subject to that give-back because it is a revolving account. It, we're just allowed to keep that sort of in advance. So, the after-school activities account is one of those, revenues come from user fees, and of course, obviously, the expenses would cover appropriate stipends and supplies. The athletic revolving account gets its revenues from user fees and gate receipts, and the expenses are part of the total plan of supporting athletics, along with what's budgeted in the local budget. Circuit breaker is state reimbursement for extraordinary costs for students with extraordinary special needs. And then, we can expend for those needs within the guidelines of circuit breaker. It doesn't cover every extraordinary cost known to man, it only covers some of it, and we are on the hook for the rest of it by law, but this is, helps sort of soften the blow for students who are of a lot of difficulty. What am I doing, Marie? I'm doing okay, all right.
She's hanging in there.
Yeah. Oh, she's, she's the one who took the school finance course, I'm sure I know what I'm talking about. Our custodial revolving account?
Judy, just a quick question on the circuit breaker.
Sure.
So, some of the extraordinary situations that occur?
Yeah.
In our district?
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that the entire thing is, is covered by a circuit breaker.
Oh, absolutely not.
Right.
Absolutely not, no. It's about 4% is what's in a break-up of extraordinary.
4%.
Yes. And that number fluctuates every year. Right now, it's about.
About 4% of what we have, we're obligated to?
Yes.
Spend?
Yes.
Wow, that's some circuit breaker.
Yeah. Yeah. It, I've had years when it's been like 2.8%. So, you know, if it's at 4%, I'm happy.
They get more generous now, that's good.
Yep. The custodial revolving account, revenues come from building use and custodial over time, fees that are paid by people who use the buildings outside of, whatever, and obviously the expenses pay for that over time, as well as any maintenance that might be associated with outside building use or, you know, utilities and that kind of stuff. We have a food service revolving account. Basically, that's managed by Chartwells, TMS, and the town, but obviously, the revenues are lunch purchases and then reimbursements that we get from the federal government for free and reduced lunch. Obviously, the expenses are driven by what Chartwells needs to run the program. And as Archie told you at the last meeting, our most recent contract with Chartwells is that this would be budget neutral, so that this would not put this line into deficit. Now, there may be times, if you were to look at an expense report, you might see food service in deficit, but it's just because of the purchasing cycle sometimes. There's, like in September, there's, or August, is a huge purchase of supplies because they need to stock their kitchens to start, to start school. And then, as revenues come in, then it all balances out. We have a kindergarten revolving account, which has a small balance, I want to say it's around $700, right at this point. It's, was driven from its past history of charging tuitions. Expenses are obviously offsetting, but because we don't charge tuition anymore, we don't have a revenue stream coming in there. So, at some point, we should probably just spend off the last of it and take it off the books. We also have a lost book revolving account. Parents who have to pay fees for lost or damaged textbooks or library books go in there, and obviously, that account is used to repair or replace those books. The parking lot fee, I know that that's always something that people get nervous about. Some students don't choose to park their cars, they choose to park them over beside a school building, whom shall remain nameless.
He tagged.
Awesome! Because he was about to get tagged, I'm just telling you, so. Anyway, but the revenues come from parking passes here at the junior, senior high school, and what we do is we pay for snow removal and maintenance to park a lot out of those fees. Preschool, we do have a revolving account. Revenues are the tuition for the typical students or the peer role models that have to, that were required to have in addition to the special education students. We abandoned charging revenues this fiscal year, and now that number is being factored into the foundation budget for chapter 70 reimbursement. Obviously, expenses are offsets for the program, so we are offsetting a little bit of some salary this year as that account begins to dwindle down. School choice, revenues obviously come from state revenue for students who choice in, and by law, the expenses are being used for offsets to help educate choice students. So, they have a little less restriction, they kind of help for a lot of different things. Tuition, these are tuitions that are not associated with choice or preschool. It might be that we have, you know, a special education program that some other district chooses to tuition a student into because it's cheaper for them to syndicate to us than to try and build a program for a single child. So, we do have a small balance in there, and the expenses, again, are offsets related to those services that are provided because that's what happens. It could also be other tuitions, for example, looking at a policy around foreign exchange students and potentially charging some tuition. So, again, this would be the list that we'll go through. So, when we look at the expenditure side of the equation, most expenses come out of the LEA, but other expenses come from grants and revolving accounts. And when you see the budget this time around, you'll actually see two bottom-line numbers. One will be the all-funds budget, along with the offsets in other places, and then one will be the LEA, which would be the total of our chapter 70 plus any expenses we recharge to the locals. So, that's how we'll look when you see it in a couple of weeks. And then, how do we build this thing? So, there are four approaches that we use in, in building a budget, and the first of that is what's known as a zero-based budget. So, basically, what I'm telling people to do is to not just look at a line and say, oh, I think I need 5% more in that line or whatever, but to basically reconstruct to the marker or the pencil. And they're all aiming for it now for doing that, but.
No, not really, because it's being done differently at each school. So, some schools, it's a little bit easier than others.
Yeah, I know, but, I know, not everybody is happy that I'm asking them to tell me of the pencil that they're buying. But again, you've backed into a number for so long, the waters have gotten muddy, and this is just a way to kind of reset the budget. So, there are grand Excel spreadsheets that have gone out to the principals and gone out to all of the team leaders, looking at how, you know, what it is that people feel like they actually need. There's also a staffing worksheet that we're working on that looks at, you know, are we bringing in somebody new? Is there a place where we don't need as many sections of a certain grade level, so that's whatever. So, we're really trying to reset and restructure the budget as we prepare for merger with the SoftRight financial management software with the town, and we're working on trying to get that done. Hopefully, I believe, I mean, I think it's Thursday afternoon with Chris Martin and Archie and myself to talk about charter accounts for SoftRight. And we've done some looking into how we tap into the town server where this is supposed to be hosted. I also did get a reply back from West Springfield, so I'm going to follow up on that as well in terms of how they've worked all through this process. So, so, doing this process this year is really allowing us to sort of reset and restructure the budget. And some of the DESI requirements have changed over time. There was a time when, say, all of your maintenance stuff was supposed to be charged to each individual school site. The DESI no longer requires you to record it that way. So, there's no need to budget toilet paper for schools. Just have a single line for custodial supplies and, and let them think so. It will also be a little more efficient, won't be quite as unwieldy as the what you've got going on now. Another approach to budgeting, which, you know, sometimes people use is what's known as a level service budget. In other words, you figure out if everything were to stay just the same in terms of service delivery, this is how much the budget would be. But knowing that we're dealing with children, things change, but you get to that sort of bottom line, and then you figure out what the changes are so that you can mirror the newer reality moving forward. So, that's a way. So that's a way we can look at budgeting, once we get through this zero-based, and here are the things we look at that we think we need. Level funded budget means that our bottom line doesn't change. You know, again, is that something that we might be faced with looking at moving forward, in which case, that really does mean reductions to the budget, because you have fixed costs, you have salaries, and all that stuff that goes up, so there's no way that you can run a school district and be level funded and level serviced at the same time, it just isn't happening. And then there's this lovely term I learned last, you know, it's the gap budget, and that's, you know, when there's a gap between what we think we need, and what the finance committee's philosophy of minimum net school spending plus an override, and then how do we prioritize? So I'm sure that as we move through this process, some of that activity will be taking place, as we go from, hi, this is what we think we need, based on what we've done here, and as we work our way probably down to something that's closer to either level funded or gap. So the next steps in the process will be February 22nd, meeting will be a presentation of the zero and needs-based budget by the senior leadership team, we'll continue to monitor the state budget, and our local response as it goes through the process, and so that's kind of where we're at. So, questions, comments, thoughts?
So speaking of gap budget, I think there is a, sometimes there is a little confusion and discrepancy in the way we all look at the budget from our different perspectives. I think the first page on this presentation is talking about, you know, we have the minimum, you know, we have the all funds and LEA, but all funds is inclusive of all the grants and everything else. The concept of the money that actually circulates through town, in fact, I should say it this way, we don't even see the money, but it is used for the purposes of education, that also becomes part of our overall budget. I think that is the part that is causing some of the confusion, in some of the in-kind services, as an example. So, we might want to just make that explicit as well, because when you look at the minimum plus three or five, it just comes to, I don't know, $8 million, say just eight to nine million dollars. But our budget is 12 and a half million.
Right.
So to be able to explain that difference to everyone, from finance committee to the town meeting, is gonna be important for us.
Right, and the in-kind services are things that the town can actually call part of its contribution to the school district, on what's known as Schedule 19, in the end of the year reports. So for example, the, all the health insurance gets paid on the town side, but the school's portion is considered an in-kind service, so it's considered something that the town does not necessarily have to pay out, so that sort of shrinks some of that pot of what they consider that part of their minimum net contribution. You know, transportation, some of those things that they do on their side, and then they just count that as part of what they contribute towards the schools, rather than billing us back.
So my last question tonight is about something that I saw in one of these pages that you shared. It looks like the projection for retired teacher health is going down.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Well, how, I mean, if healthcare costs is going up, and we have more retired folks probably, how is that item going down?
Um, I would say probably is dependent on who's on Medicare, who's getting Medicare supplements, and how much they're taking...
Like mine, mine is, I know mine is changing.
So you switch off to...
Because of the age, so then it costs me more, but the town less.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can say that that way, it's what it is.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you, Judy.
That's why.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm only one, but there's others. Yeah, contributed for 38 years, so why stop now? And the grants, that, when, when do you know that, and all the grants that I see in our list and so on, are those, you're counting on those, or those are definite? And when do those come in?
All of the entitlement grants, we know we're going to get.
Okay.
So we give it our best guesstimate, if we think there's a rumbling that there may be a decrease in the budget planning process, we'll say, okay, Title I was, say, $50,000 this year, but we've heard by way of the brake line, it's gonna be a 20% decrease, so we're anticipating $40,000. So we'll do things like that in terms of our budget projections, or we'll leave them level funded. Oftentimes, we don't hear about those Title I, I didn't hear about that one until July of this year, so it was well after the budget was set, but we give it our best shot, and we were actually able to get a little more out of Title I than we thought we were gonna get this year.
Because if you go through the budget, we want to make sure, use Kristen's example, that her salary is over there in that Title I grant, and nowhere else.
Well, I mean, part of her salary...
Or whatever part, but the rest of her salary is there, and everyone else that, you know, we know who's paying with the grant, so they're not in the local thing at all, so that we can make sure that we're maximizing our funds.
Right. One of the things with Title I, you do have to put the teacher's salaries in there, but the state has a service charge for Massachusetts teachers' retirement, that is equal to what the district would pay, and does pay, for teachers' retirement. They charge you a 9% assessment, off the top. So, for example, in the kindergarten grant this year, we chose not to fund any teacher salaries, but we chose to do paraprofessional salaries, because that's accounting retirement, and the 9% doesn't happen. You send 9% of somebody's salary out the door, if you're putting teacher salaries, so we're trying to do some of those kinds of things this year, where we're putting in more para salaries, or we're offloading more supplies and putting salaries back into the budget, so it doesn't cost us an extra 9% in grant funds on top of that. So, those are some of the ways in which you have to kind of think creatively about how you use some of these grant funds.
Apparently, the state is thinking very creatively, anyway.
They certainly are, because they seem to like taking that 9% right off the top, and it doesn't seem to bother them in the least.
The administrative indirect fund, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Judy, this was very informative.
So as I start to throw out this, at least, I hope I've given you a little lexicon of what some of these mean, and if, if there's any time you think I'm speaking in tongues, stop me, and I will try and clarify, because I live with this language all the time, so I forget sometimes that this is a lot of terminology to digest, so...
And on a positive note, we can add this to our million minutes every day.
There you go, so, you track them!
My son thought that he had to read a million minutes.
Keep it up, tell him.
Oh, I haven't told him, I have now corrected him.
Awesome!
So, he's sitting at the table, doing his math homework, and I see him, in his head, thinking about the reading, and he looks at me, he goes, "Mom, do you know how old I'm gonna be by the time I do a million minutes?"
That's awesome!
I said, "Write it down, and bring it in for extra credit." He goes, "No."
That's awesome, that's great.
So when do you think we're gonna have the first draft of our zero-based budget?
Um, next meeting.
Really?
Yep.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's the next meeting.
Hell, hell, gangs all here, we're all coming. It's gonna be a one-item agenda, unless we have to talk about something else, so, we're not inundating people with stuff. So, there you have it.
So...
Finance 101.
Yeah, that was good. So I think that's all we have in this section, right?
Yes.
Okay, so new business, we have a policy manual first read for Section I.
Did you want to say anything about that?
So the policy subcommittee came together, and we have reviewed Section I, and made changes, and we'd like, we voted to recommend it to the whole committee to review for first reading.
So that's gonna help our million minutes, too?
Yes, absolutely. So this is basically just, the whole purpose of doing first and second readings is just really more of a public awareness thing, that you are considering policy changes, certainly I can get this uploaded online, so if anybody wanted to look at what the revised policy manual is gonna look like, in case they want to read for a million minutes, single-handedly as well.
So this is, this is uploaded in our drive?
Yes.
We're not gonna obviously read it right now, but if, you know, if you can just read Section I, and let us know next time.
Yeah, and so next time, it will come to you for a kind of...
We have no old business. Upcoming business, we have the presentation on the fiscal '17 budget.
Correct.
Which we just talked about. And then, we talked about it last time, that we're gonna have our formative assessment of our superintendents next time as well. Any questions?
Bring your notebooks, I'll have.
Yep. Cool. So we have the...
I have more reading for you, too.
Yeah. We have the standing reports, I actually mentioned part of, part of the meeting we had at the collaborative, which was last week. Those meetings are actually becoming even more interesting, the, it used to be, you know, there's an agenda, we just go through everything, everybody says aye, nay, and all done, now there is a, the, the most exciting and most involved portion of the meeting is related to policy, and how the collaborative can actually affect policy, and this conversation about charter schools, and school choice, and everything else came about during that segment, and we're hoping that we can do more, in fact, we're hoping that we're gonna, we're looking for a way to involve all these school committees indirectly as well, just how, how can we interact with other school committees to make sure that we are exchanging information and knowledge. This actually, interestingly, was, that that was the thing that I wanted to mention related to this last meeting of the collaborative. We meet every other month, so, I'm not gonna have anything next month, but, or next meeting, but we're gonna meet again in March. Anybody who would like to get involved in some of these conversations, whether it's some conversation with Stan Rosenberg, or some other elected officials, I'm sure you get the same notices as well, anyway, please let me know, then I will make sure that you're, I mean, you know, all that stuff, you're involved in those, but other than that, I intend to share with you whenever there's something that comes through the collaborative regularly, anyway. That's all I have. Next one is West Street Building Committee. Jim, Judy, did you guys know?
MSBA voted yes.
Yes.
Ready to go for town meeting Monday night.
Yep.
Ready to go.
You're starting to see some signs.
Yeah.
How are the signs up?
My signs up.
Well, the signs are independent of the school building committee.
Yeah, it's an outside group, yeah.
Those are, yeah, those are basically folks independently supporting the school building, which is very nice. School, as, you know, everybody mentioned, the budget and design, they were approved last week at the MSBA meeting, and we also found out that our funding conversations will lead to about 2%, if not a little more, decrease in the overall tax impact.
Yeah, it's under 10%.
Under 10.
It is under 10%.
About 9.6, so, yeah, it was a little diplomacy done in a bathroom. I met up with one of the board members who, when I first went to the facilities assessment subcommittee, I think I've been on board all of a week and a half, and she wanted to know about, you know, my role as an interim, and what would happen when a new superintendent came in, and would they change the whole plan, and I said, "I'm not really advocating, you know, anything that not any other superintendent would advocate for," and whatnot, so, you know, and she asked me, in front of a group of folks, would I apply for the vacancy, and I was like, "Great, so put me in this kind of weird place, we can happen to being on a job." So, I arrived at the MSBA, went into the restroom, who's at the sink, but this woman, so, she's talking about, you know, "Isn't it nice that we don't have any snow?" And I said, "Yeah, I don't have to get up at 4:00 in the morning, call school," and she said, "Oh, you're a superintendent?" And I thought, here's my golden opportunity, so, I said, "Yep, what district?" "Remy, oh, we're voting on your project today." I said, "Yes, you are," and I said, "I remember you had a concern about the interim superintendent, I want you to know the school committee signed a contract last night, she is fully on board and ready to take the project over the finish line." "Oh, that's great." So, we get to the public meeting, I had an informal conversation with someone, I'm like, "Oh, jeez," whatever, but anyway, so...
You know, when she said they were voting on our project, you should've said, "No kidding, I just stopped by for the restroom."
My mother taught me, never bite the hand that feeds you, so, but anyway, it all, you know, it all went well.
Yeah, that's good, we're happy.
Reminding people to come out February 8th, Monday night, 10 o'clock.
Yep, and then, I'm doing coffee and conversation at East Metal School tomorrow afternoon, West Street School Thursday afternoon, and here at the junior, senior high Friday evening in conjunction with parent-teacher conferences and parent night, and two topics.
Friday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday. And then, you know, having, talking a little bit about the change from MCAS to Park, I'll have some information for parents that they can take away from that, but Jim is gonna be at least available for some of it, and I think Jim Morrissey may be able to pop in as well, so we're going to have, I have a sort of a PowerPoint loop that we can have on, we'll have the boards that are in the back of the room available as well for people to look at, and then folks will be around to answer questions about the building project as well.
So, since you mentioned it, the other feverish conversation at the collaborative meeting this, last week, was related to standardized testing. So, you know, we are, we're given two options supposedly, and then, you know, we're going towards this MCAS 2.0 thing, but there is, there is a growing number of school districts that are considering what would mean to opt-out of the whole thing, and just put some weight on it to make sure that whatever standardized testing will come our way, is actually something meaningful that aligns with whatever the school districts are trying to do. And apparently Stan Rosenberg was, was in support of that as well, as he mentioned to folks. I don't have all the details, but as they are available, I will share with Judy, maybe we can include to some of our meetings and have some conversation around it as well.
State law in Massachusetts does not allow for an opt-out of state testing, other states do, Massachusetts is not one of them.
And that, that came up, but apparently, some people individually did.
Yeah, they just don't send their kids to school that day, count them as absent. The problem is, though, part of your accountability level gets determined by the participation in the test, so that's not helpful, in terms of district...
Change the law, I guess. Yeah. Well, either the law, or the other side of it was, I mean, it's, you know, either you change the law, it was acknowledged, but the, the conversation was this, what if just, you know, two people, instead of two people doing it, 200,000 people just decide that, hey, you know, we're not taking this thing? I'm not saying that it's, it's the way to do it, but how do we, how do we engage in the conversation, as opposed to someone saying, "This is basically the only option that you have right now, whether you like it or not, and we're not gonna have any conversation." Because the way we voted for Park, and we had the conversation, as I recall, we were given a week. You have to vote on this, within this window, and by the way, here are two choices, and we are really pushing you with all the little baits that we put in here, in a direction of Park.
Yeah, with the whole harmless, that's basically what they did, was push districts into taking it.
So, you know, what I, what I said at that conversation is that, as far as I've known, wherever I was, there was always some standardized testing. That's not the thing. Standardized testing is fine, you measure certain things, but whatever you offer in your educational system aside from that, and how do you not just reduce the entire educational system to one test? You know, this is basically your life, just, you know, Park, your career in college is dependent on whatever, and however you do on this thing. So, I mean, a lot of good conversation can be had, but I think a lot of folks are thinking the same way, so maybe in the, in the near future, we can do that.
The shared services working group, I think you made a statement to the select board about your thoughts with regard to business services, so I don't see that as an issue that's probably going to move forward in the near future on any realm.
No. I think that's gonna require some homework, part of it could involve, as I heard at that meeting, and correct me, inviting Department of Revenue to help us with some study, some analysis, similar to what they've done with some other towns, but other than that, we will not, currently, we will not do... But other than that, we will not, currently, we will not do anything with the financial shared services. But on the side, the whole conversation about Soft Right and how we can collaborate and make sure that we're all on the same system, that could have some, and hopefully, that will have some benefits for the school and...
It certainly would decrease the he-said, she-said about balances, because it would be transparent on both sides. And, you know, reclasses whether they're done on both sides and all of that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Speaking of that, discrepancy?
Again, I know that, I think Jim had a conversation with Mr. Martin about some of that stuff, because I know TMS has been pulling up some information about that, but there were two emails that we found, that TMS found outlining reclassifications at the end of the fiscal year that were shared with Mr. Martin. Both an email, he asked a question, and a follow-up that was given. So I, we all assumed it was pretty clear, but obviously, it was not, so... That's the next step, is to uncover that. But if we're sharing the same software, and we both have full access rights to view, and there's none of this having a reclass on one side, and then have the other class do, have the other side do the reclass, it just happens and it's seen.
Did those reports come in, now, he told me, because I was there doing my ski thing, and said that these, these financial reports, like, he gave me a copy of, they, they come here, or emailed here?
Yes.
To TMS once a month, but yet there were not some accounts listed there? And I said, "Well, why is that?" And no one can answer that. That's why I emailed Andy and said, "Do you have these figures here, the adjusted budget?" Because otherwise, it keeps, keeps getting adjusted, and if no one sees them, and say, "Wait a minute, there's not, why is the $1,000 taken out of there when it shouldn't be?" It could be corrected immediately.
Right.
Before two or three months goes by, so...
Or if our chart of accounts is speaking to each other, what we do on our side is going to translate on the municipal side without a second set of hands having to touch it.
Right, but we're not in that yet.
Right.
So if we don't straighten these out now, it could cause another problem coming up at the end of this fiscal year.
Right, exactly.
All right. Okay. Policy Subcommittee?
So as we discussed before, we finished with Section I, and adding to our one million more minutes of reading, we're going to Section J, which was 200 pages long. So, we're currently working on that to figure out what needs to really be in there and what doesn't, to make it more clear.
We cut some out tonight.
A lot of work you're doing.
My goodness.
We cut some out.
Yeah, so now it's shorter than my dissertation. When I first saw it, it was actually 201 pages, and I took a page break out, so I thought, "Wow, this is five pages longer than my whole dissertation."
So obviously, we're still working on this Section J, but we're going to have one quick recommendation from that section for immediate review and approval that we need to get in, the books changed and get into books.
Yeah, that's the restraint policy, because there's been a major change in regulations in the state, so we do have model policy based on those regulations. So those will be coming at the next meeting. So it'll be a two agenda meeting.
Yeah, I'm thinking three already.
Yeah, three.
How many, I mean, that's, I'm already thinking this is a midnight...
No, 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 because we're not asking you to think about the budget.
Okay.
We're just going to give it to you. You don't have to think or overthink the budget.
We have questions, though, we can ask, right? We can ask questions.
The budget will be served on the new software.
Yeah.
And that's a meeting where I believe we have a couple of sessions of collective bargaining, and then the policy subcommittee, and then the school committee, so I will feed you again.
It's going to be a wonderful one.
Fire up the crock pot.
All right. The fireplace.
No, the crock.
Okay, all right, we'll go with it.
Lootin' free, I promise, Dean.
Is there anything else in one of these committees, subcommittees to add? All good? Okay. So, we have a set of correspondence that are posted in our drive. As mentioned, please take a look at the Section I for the policies for next time. And I think we have an executive session.
Yes, the only other thing that was in your correspondence is just nothing you need to act on, but there was a Basketball Observer report from the MIAA that, you know, rated the game pretty well in terms of...
Yeah, I did not see anything in the report.
It was blank.
It was blank.
Really?
I saw the report.
Oh, really?
You've got to look real hard, it's pretty small.
I guess.
You know, it's funny, there was a piece of the letter from the collaborative, I only got a piece of that.
Hmm.
That's weird, huh?
Yeah. But anyway.
Well, it's collaborative, you have to put many pieces together.
You know what I assumed? Well, I guess she's not done with this yet.
No.
I saw the whole thing.
Anyway, so, they talked about the facilities needing some updates and the basketball thing, because the roof was leaking, but...
Yeah, it was an overall good rating.
Yeah.
Cool. So, are we all good?
Yes.
All right, so there's some good news for you to attend in this one. We're still going with the, not returning, right? Okay. We're going to vote to enter into executive session according to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 38, Part A4, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. The committee will not return to open session.
Deanne Pamerkowski, aye.
Jeff Karan, aye.
Marimba Court, aye.
Jim Petrus, aye.
Anne Royer, aye.